I'd like to call the Monday, January 22nd, 2018 Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. And if I could please ask you to please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and also those watching. And at this time, I'd like to also welcome Mr. Mike Mallon, our new Assistant Director of Community Development. So we want to welcome you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our agenda tonight is the -- we have the minutes, the consent agenda is number one. Number two, we have the public hearing, conditional use for the City of Blue Springs. Number three, we have Southwest Park rezoning. The applicant has been -- has asked to have that continued. Number four, site plan design review for the City of Blue Springs. Number five, the final plat for the -- also the City of Blue Springs. And number six, the amended planned residential overlay for the pines, then followed by other business and adjournment. With that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I move that the minutes from January 8th, as amended by staff, be approved.
All right. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greta. This is the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. So we will hear number two, which also includes number four and five for the City of Blue Springs. The first one is a public hearing, and I'm going to read the instructions on the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I'll call for exhibits from our city attorney. Staff will make their presentation as well as if they are the applicant. They'll probably do both of those at the same time. I'll call for witnesses in favor and those opposed. We'll have general discussion, and at that time, we'll close the public hearing and the commissioners will vote. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the attorney to please read their --
Madam Chair, and I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, the staff report with attachments. Two affidavit of publications in the examiner on January 6th, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And exhibit eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Thank you very much. And Ms. DuRide, you're going to do both?
Yes.
For the city and as for staff, correct?
I believe that we will have a separate presentation for staff.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
For the applicant. Thank you Chairman Banks and Commissioners. Before you this evening are three requests related to the City Hall renovation and addition project. The approximately two-acre site is located at the northwest corner of West Main Street and Northwest 10th Street and includes the main City Hall building and the City Hall Annex building. The City Council approved the rezoning and the vacation request on January 16th, which officially rezoned the property to CS Civic Space and vacated the former alley and a portion of street right away along Northwest 10th Street, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission back at our last meeting on January 8th. The first request is for a conditional use permit to permit a prominent civic building in the CS Civic Space zoning district. Prominent civic buildings are only permitted in the CS zoning district and only with a conditional use permit. The second request this evening is for a site plan design review for the renovation of City Hall and a new 6,200-square-foot building addition, along with associated site improvements. There are no minimum or maximum building setbacks or building heights in the CS zoning district. However, the proposed setbacks are already -- will not decrease from what is already existing. There's currently a approximately 6.8-foot setback on the east property line adjacent to single fam -- to the T3 zoning district where there are some single-family residences. And then there's an approximately 23 and 1/2-foot setback along the Main Street frontage. As you can see, the new building addition is further away from the property lines than the existing buildings are. The existing parking lot currently has no setback. There's a 25-foot setback required in the Downtown Development Code. However, the -- since the existing parking is on the property line, it will be -- that setback will be increased to five feet along both Northwest 10th and Main Streets. In addition to increasing the parking lot setback, the landscape plan does show that the parking areas will be screened with landscaping as well as retaining walls in some areas that will provide some screening headlights from these streets. Access from Main Street that is currently located in this area where the water billing drop-off used to be will be removed. To make up for that loss of access on Main Street, there will be a second access drive that will be added here to the north side of the parking lot. This access right here is the existing access from 10th Street. With the -- with the new access, there will be improved circulation through the parking lot. The current parking lot configuration is made up of one-way drive aisles. Those will go away and we will have two-lane drive aisles that should make parking circulation Fifty-nine parking spaces are proposed, including four ADA spaces. All the ADA spaces are right up here, up in the front. This is the new building entrance, so ADA spaces will be conveniently located for those that need those. Although there is -- this is a decrease, a decrease of five spaces, there are still -- this is still sufficient capacity to accommodate visitors and employees on site. The Downtown Development Code does not currently address bicycle parking, but institutional uses elsewhere in the city are required 5% of their spaces to be used for bicycle parking based on the number of parking spaces. 5% of that would be approximately three spaces. Staff is coordinating with the Parks Department on the installation of a bike rack at the renovated City Hall site. Also on the site plan, you can see the pedestrian access through the site. There's one here from Main Street that will connect to the main building entrance. There's also access from the 10th Street parking lot, and there will be striping through the parking lot to reach the main entrance. And then also, a minimum eight-foot sidewalk is required along Main Street between 7th Highway and 10th Street. The site has met all landscaping requirements. Here is an image of the landscape plan. You can see street trees along Main Street, 10th Street, and Summit Drive. All those have -- requirements have been met. There is no minimum landscaping requirements for open space or parking lot in the Downtown Development Code, but as you can see, they've -- we've provided a significant amount of landscaping, including parking lot trees, ground cover, and numerous shrubs and plantings adjacent to the parking lot as well as adjacent to the main building entrance. New parking lot and pedestrian lighting are also included on this plan. There will be parking lot lights, poles in the parking lot, as well as along the pedestrian path here, there will be three-foot ballards that will be lit. And I'll pull up the building elevations here. This is a view from 10th Street of the new building entrance, which will be part of the new two-story addition. The only signage that is proposed or that was included with the review packet is adjacent or is above the new building entrance as well as a city logo. Any additional signage will be reviewed administratively. For the building design, the current City Hall and Annex buildings include approximately 2,100 square feet of floor area -- or sorry, 21,000 square feet of floor area. This two-story addition will include 6,200 square feet that will connect the existing City Hall to the Annex building. The existing buildings will retain their existing building materials, which is primarily a mix of concrete and brick. There are also some tiles on the Main Street facade. The existing building materials will be cleaned and painted where necessary to match the -- or to complement the new addition. And then on the Main Street facade, these areas currently have tile. Those will be -- those will be covered with stone to bring the new addition, the materials from the new addition, into the front facade, just so there's a better cohesive design with the new and the old. On the landscape plan, bring that back up. The City Hall trash enclosure will be relocated off-site to the lot to the east where there's an office building right now at 901 West Main Street. And that will be enclosed with corrugated metal panels and on all four sides, including the gate. And then rooftop equipment on the new addition will be screened on the rooftop. Existing equipment on the existing buildings will not be screened as part of this renovation project, but is planned to be screened at a later date under a separate project. And then for the final request, there's a final plat for Blue Springs City Hall. The only item that has not been addressed and that needs to be addressed on the final plat are utility easements for electric and gas, which are currently -- which currently have lines along 10th Street at the back of the sidewalk. Both of those easements are currently being determined by the engineer and the architect as far as what size of easements those will need to be. Once those have been determined, they will be delineated and dedicated on the final plat. That will need to be done prior to City Council approval. Sidewalk improvements and street trees shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certific certificate of occupancy, and then the final plat must be approved and recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits. The Downtown Review Board reviewed both the conditional use permit and the site plan design review applications, and they recommended approval of both. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with six conditions, site plan design review with seven conditions, and the final plat with six conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do the commissioners have a question for staff? Commissioner Billups?
I would like to preface my question with a thanks to the city for bringing this before us, because I know they did not have to do that. They could choose to just do what they wanted without bringing it to us. So I really appreciate the fact that they've done that and let us have a look at it and give us a say in it. Could you talk for a minute? You kind of, I don't think you touched on it, the sidewalk down 10th Street that is not going to be up to the downtown standards, and is that something that we would do for anybody on 10th Street, or is that something that's an accommodation for City Hall?
I think at this time, we would probably do that for anybody along 10th Street based on the current design of 10th Street. We didn't have Friendship Manor, for example, install that sidewalk either. The Downtown Master Plan, when that was approved, it envisioned 10th Street sort of being an extension of Main Street, having a commercial frontage where they had the wide sidewalks at the back of the curb, and then the buildings pushed up to the sidewalk. But based on the current development patterns along 10th Street, that doesn't seem to be necessary. So that would be something that we would probably reevaluate at some point in the future when we review the Downtown Master Plan again.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I was curious how there will be access to the trash enclosure?
So the trash enclosure, at least for City Hall employees and staff, would be through a sidewalk back there. In terms of how the trash company will access it, they would be accessing it through the drive just to the east of City Hall. So it's on a separate property, but there is access back there.
Does the city have an easement then for that trash enclosure? Or are they paying rent for it, or what?
I am not sure I can answer that. There might be somebody else here who can.
Okay. We can ask the applicant. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Judging from the picture, Matt, is there a bike rack included in the parking design?
The bike rack has not been shown on here, but we are recommending one, and we do believe that that is something that we can have installed. As far as where it's located, that has not been determined just yet.
I think you had said that you had addressed it with the parks for three racks, three bikes?
A bike rack that can accommodate at least three bicycles.
Correct.
And whether or not that's up here by the building entrance, or it could be up here along Main Street, we just haven't quite decided that just yet.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. Hearing that, I'll -- if the applicant would like to come forward, I think you said that somebody else would make another presentation?
Do I need to do this?
Yes.
Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Eric Johnson, City Administrator. I work at 903 Main Street, and I live at 3116 Southwest Shroud Creek Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri. And good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I think it's been a while since I've been in front of you. Maybe
I don't think you have.
Seventeen years. Well, we have such a competent staff that does an excellent job, I usually don't have to be here. But since my name appears on the application for this project, I thought it would be appropriate for me to show up tonight. Regarding the question about the trash, I'm currently working with our neighbor to the immediate east, and that would be Jim Evans and his partners that own the property. And we do not yet have an agreement inked, but I'm confident that we will have an agreement between us and Mr. Evans where we would share a joint trash facility. It works well for him, works well for us. His drive currently accommodates the weight of the trash truck, and it removes the trash bin, if you will, from the front of our new entrance, and we thought it'd be appropriate to tidy that up and not have trash trucks circulating through that, our parking lot and the main entrance of City Hall. So that's a communication that's ongoing. I'm currently working with him, and Mr. Evans is an awesome neighbor, and we're trying to work something out with that that would be beneficial for both of us. Does that address your question, ma'am?
Yes, I just see that there's an area that looks like it would be wide enough to accommodate the trash locator -- location at the back of that
Sure.
-- new building.
We may ultimately move that receptacle a little bit to the west. There is a little bit of space in there, so that is a possibility. It's not yet finalized, but the trash will go generally in that location. And we will design it in a manner that it fits for both users.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, this is going to be a building that we have in our community for quite some time. I'm sure you're building it to last. What I wanted to ask is, was there any consideration into providing solar or any other kind of renewable energy to help kind of offset the cost of energy over time and maybe saving people a little bit of money there?
So I'll answer your question, but I'm going to back up a little bit to provide a little bit of context. This -- there are two properties here that are being joined together, and the -- our architects are here with us tonight, and if you need to hear from them, you can
I'm standing behind you.
Okay, Harry, thank you. And this has been a challenging project because you have a -- an original building that was built in 1961 that originally served as City Council chambers and primarily a police department. We have really innovative reuse of the original cell that was on the lower level. We call it the garden level. And then the, if you've been in Blue Springs long enough, you know that years ago, Blue Springs provided ambulance service. And so the tilt-up, very architecturally stunning building that is to the north, so we're bringing those two buildings together. So it was built in 1961, and then the ambulance facility was built. I'm, I don't know the exact date. Mr. Haney, you may know that better than I do. But let's just say early to mid-'70s. And so we're looking, and then it was renovated again in 1988, '89. And so we're looking at this as a 30-year-plus building. We did not take into account solar panels or the utilization of that, but at every stage of this project, we've looked for energy-efficient, either new windows, new tiles, things that create or change the insulation of the building, the utilization or plumbing of electricity and water. No solar. Harry, we didn't look at that, did we?
No, no solar.
So, but we're trying to make it, it is not a LEED-certified project, but we're certainly taking those concepts and long-term efficiencies into the project where we can.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Madam Chair?
Mr. Johnson, will there be a regrade in that particular area, the parking lot? What concerns me is stormwater retention or flow. And are there any plans on doing something different with grade? And the second question is, at each end of the parking roads, could there be, would you consider some substrate of course material that would take care of stormwater?
I'll defer to our planning staff and engineering with regard to the stormwater. And with regard to the parking lot, I think this commission knows that this is a very, very challenging site. There is a 25-foot elevation change from the southernmost point to the northern northwest corner of the lot. We are actually going to try to balance some of the parking lot, and on the southern portion where you see, there's like kind of a nook with, I think, five parking spaces. That plan is going to be adjusted just a little bit, but we're actually going to dig down and have about a three-foot cut, 36-inch cut maybe, into our parking lot so that we can move some soil to the northern portion. We're going to try to balance it so that for our customers, I can tell you how many slips, trips, and falls we've had in our parking lot over the years as a result of the incline and the challenges it presents. So we're going to be working on that. With regard to the, I'll tell you, on the north side of the site, there's going to be, I believe, two retaining walls that will be on the north side of the site all the way to Summit Street. We will, there will be some grading in there. The retaining walls were proposed because it reduced the cost of the project. And with regard to stormwater, I'm going to have to defer to someone else. You guys make one. Or Harry?
Our civil engineer.
Okay.
Brad. Yeah, Brad. Our civil engineer on the site. So I'm Harriet Grundle with SFS Architecture. He said, so I got to swear in.
Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. As he said, that we are mediating the grades across the parking lot, as well as overall, our impervious surface area is decreasing with the removal of the three duplexes as well as their driveways along the northern portion of the site. And then Brad, who is our civil engineer, can speak more about the stormwater detention or stormwater management, not detention.
If you'd be sworn in, please.
Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Brad Sonner with Olson Associates, 7301 West 133rd Street, Old Oak Park, Kansas. And as Harriet mentioned, we are increase, we're decreasing impervious area, so we're increasing green space on the site. And generally, the drainage is, it will continue as it is today. It will head to the north and west, and it'll cross under 10th Street, just as it does today. So that will collect it in the same manner.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Fairbanks?
Have you contacted KCPN L about making a charging station for electric vehicles available?
We actually have six vehicle charging stations across the street in our current parking lot at the northwest corner of Northwest 10th and Main Street. So those are available for the public to use downtown.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner?
Commissioner? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I just want to conclude and by saying, we're very excited about this project because the city, I believe, is demonstrating their commitment to the downtown corridor and the Main Street, 10th Street corridor. This has been a very challenging project, but we believe that in the long run, our goal of providing an enhanced customer service experience for people who visit City Hall and who need to conduct business there will find that eventually this will be a very nice one-stop shop. And for the members of our public who are currently becoming educated and informed on where we're currently located and how we're going to be operating in temporary spaces, we just ask for your continued patience. As we know, it can be frustrating when you think you're going to City Hall, and all of a sudden, the doors are locked and the lights are off. So we hope within 14 to 16 months that everyone here and on the City Council and those who have participated in this project will look at this as, wow, we should have done this a long time ago.
Could I ask, are all the City Hall services all over here at the lumber building?
No. So very quickly, I'll highlight what we have. So the municipal annex, that's our official term. We don't like calling it an old lumberyard.
Okay. Well, I thought maybe the public might not know what we were talking about.
The municipal annex located at 1304 Main Street directly to the west of the railroad tracks on Main Street will house water and sewer. It also houses our planning department and our codes department. Mr. Allen just got back today, as you know, from vacation, and he's currently trying to find his office. We also have the Economic Development Department, which includes Mark Stambach and Teresa Evans. So they, those are all the services located at the municipal annex. The Office of the Mayor, City Administrator, City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, the City Attorney, and Finance Department will all be located in this building. We didn't know this when we built this structure, but we built this for the future, and at the time, we added capacity. And so we're now using that additional capacity that we were planning for for police services. And the Human Resources Department is currently located at the Field House. And the Engineering Department, I believe you already know, is located at space that we are renting on Vesper. It's where Mr. Tom and his staff and folks are hanging out.
We're all spread out.
We certainly are. But you know what? We have done that in an attempt to save money on this project. We've real, we are self-performing, and we're, a huge thanks to the Parks and Recreation, Building Maintenance and Recreation staff because they have been the ones who have been moving us and relocating and equipping our temporary spaces. So couldn't do this project without all of their hard work.
Well, we thank them.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Sorry, I have so many questions.
I have so many answers.
Since you're trying to make this a one-stop shop, are you going to be incorporating the driver's license office in City Hall again?
Yeah, so the city got out of the driver's license business three years ago. Because we, over time, discovered that the city taxes and city services was beginning to subsidize a state program. The Driver's License Bureau is a state-operated program. It's not city. And so the discussion and the analysis that we had was, why should city taxpayers continue to subsidize and support a state program? So we will not be getting back into the driver's license business. They are located on South 7. I'm sure you've been there.
Yes, I have.
I actually think they do a pretty nice job.
They did a great job in September when I renewed my license.
Right.
But it was a one-stop shop previously.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would ask if there was any witnesses that would like to come in favor of this project? of this project, that would like to speak. Yes, ma'am. You need to be sworn in?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you sound this way to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Cindy Miller. My address is 401 Southwest 18th Street in Blue Springs, Missouri, 64015. So thank you for letting me speak to you tonight, commissioners. I represent the Downtown Alive group on the Downtown Review Board. And we looked at this project as a board, I believe the date was January 11th. And the renderings that we were presented with were considerably different. Can you all hear me okay? Is that better?
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. Considerably different than what you all have been presented with tonight. So the night, the evening when we were presented, the Downtown Review Board was presented with the renderings. I was not, I voted no, not in favor of supporting the project. While I am very excited that the city is investing in our downtown district, that's what we're hoping for, is to have investment into the downtown district, and I appreciate that they're making that investment, I didn't feel like that the renderings that we saw were in keeping with the, kind of the historical preservation nature of what we're trying to accomplish in the district. So I did not support the project. However, the architect was not able to be at the meeting due to some weather issues, and we were told that the renderings that we saw didn't really depict what the true building would look like. So that night, I made a commitment that if I saw different renderings and I thought they were a lot better, that I would be more than happy to come to this meeting to you all to let you know that had I seen what you saw, I would have changed my vote. So this rendering that I saw today, Eric shared them with us earlier today, and I we are, I am very much in favor of this project. I think it looks a lot better than what we saw. So Joe Haney was at that meeting, and I think everyone kind of cringed when I did not support the project. So I do support it now. So I just wanted to share that and let you all know. And again, I apologize the way I'm dressed. We had our gala pre-sale on. I'm kind of dressed in my western outfit, so sorry. Didn't have time to change.
That's all right.
So, anything else?
Are there any questions for the witness witnesses?
Madam Chair. Ms. Miller, you're one up on us because the agenda, our agenda items that were received did not have any renderings at all.
Oh, well, you're going to be happy and surprised.
You couldn't really tell.
Yeah, much, much better. 10 million times better. I'm just going to tell you. They're very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to come forward that is in opposition to this project? Okay. Are there any other questions for staff before I close the hearing?
Madam Chair. Notification letters, were they in return?
Yes. We received one from a JD2 LLC at 901 West Main Street.
Okay. Also, were there any opposition letters that were received?
No, sir.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Cradoff?
Madam Chair. I highly commend the design concept that has been brought before us here today. And owing to the fact that they're considering a bike rack, I was wondering if we could add that as a condition. Is that possible?
I'm going to refer to, I gather you could. Mr. Allen?
Madam Chair, looking at the appropriateness of that, I would recommend that would be included with a site plan and design review condition. And can certainly include that as an additional specific condition above and beyond what's already been recommended by staff.
Yes. I would agree. If you want to add it to the site plan and design review on item four.
Okay.
Rather than this one, this is the public hearing for conditional use permit.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Casey?
Just in regards to using renewable energy on this project, I think this is something that's, we're probably going to need to address sometime in the next 30 years. So it's just something that I think we're going to want to take a look at again at some point. Not necessarily today, but at some point, it's going to make more sense to have that initial investment into renewable energy to save money in the long run on energy costs. So I'd just like staff and anyone involved in that process to just keep that in mind for future projects and additions.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Mr. Haney?
I have one.
Go right here.
No. Thank you. Don't have a picture here of the side views or whatever. I have a little thing. It'd be remiss if I didn't bring up, it's on, it's a drawing of the whole picture from the side. There, this one. I guess my country roots are coming out. If I had all of the design, and then we have the, the only thing I can think of is a silo it looks like to me. And I'm curious why that building doesn't match the rest of the building. I know that's part of the site plan review, but, I mean, it's a comment, I'm sure, you know, it's certain, nobody, it just looks strange to me of all that's building or of all that. Not all matching.
I think, given the financial constraints, it was maintaining the existing materials is the number-one priority. However, we do recognize that those buildings, there will be some cleaning and then also painting of them to just kind of freshen them up to better complement new addition.
It just doesn't match, and that's a comment that I have, but you know, I'd like to say it reminds me of that.
What he's trying to say is that it's ugly.
Okay.
I'll respond very quickly.
Yes.
You know, the late Bob Daffer loved concrete tilted up like this. So, Mr. Haney, the view you're seeing there is, one of them is going to be on the east side of the property.
I understand.
So it's off of Main Street, it's off of 10th Street. And frankly, we had a limited budget that didn't give us the ability to totally cover, canvas, and repurpose that space. The, can you pull up the new rendering map? It's not perfect, but you can see this, this iron that runs through here, don't know if you are aware of that architectural feature, actually matches the iron that faces Main Street. And that was a theme that we tried to play off of. And it's also a theme that we're trying to tie in with the Main Street monument signs that have been presented and approved by Downtown Alive. But this ironwork, you can see, here's what you're calling the grain elevator, will cover some of that. Approximately, we'll say, 25% of that building has a screening. And...
Go back to the other picture if you would, and then show me where that is covered.
Okay. So, yeah, so can you draw, just draw on that? So there you go. That iron and that screening covers a little bit. It'll be painted. But the short answer is budgetary constraint. Didn't allow us to address that and clean it up to a manner that you would be satisfied with.
No, the comment, I understand that, but it just kind of takes away from the rest of the building in line.
It's going to be beautiful.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'm going to give you all the opportunity. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Phillips?
I would move, we recommend approval of the conditional use permit, CUP 12176185, with the six staff conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Cradoff?
I have a roll call.
Planning Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, now we'll go to item three while we're there. And this was a public hearing for Southwest Park, but as you can see, they've asked to, the applicants requested to continue to Monday, February the 12th. I'm going to open the public hearing, and then I would entertain a motion to continue. All right. I've opened the public hearing for rezoning of Southwest Park, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the rezoning request, RZ 12176192, be continued to February 12th meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
One second.
Fairbanks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that public hearing for Southwest Park's been continued to February the 12th. Now we'll go ahead and go back to number, we'll go on to number four, which is, and five, which was both Blue Springs, the city, Blue Springs, we've heard both parts. But I will ask if there anybody has any more questions for Mr. Wright, or Mr. Jury. Does anybody have any more questions? Okay. Now, this is where, on the site plan and design review, if I, we entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the site plan and design review, SPDR 12176186, with the seven conditions, and adding a condition of a, addition of a back rack, be approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Cradoff? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll go on to number five. Are there any questions for Mr. Wright? Again. All right. I would entertain a motion for the final plat of the city of Blue Springs.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Peel?
I move the final plat, PF 12176187, for city of Blue Springs, and the six conditions be approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Now that will be, go before the City Council on February the 5th at 6:00 PM. All right. Now we'll go on to number six, which is the amended plan residential overlay for the Pines for Lot 1. Mr. Jury?
Thank you, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. Before you today is an amended PRO final plan for Lot 1 in the Pines, located at 2205 Southeast Pine Gate Circle, which is on the east side of Adams Dairy Parkway. The entire subdivision has about, or has 51 lots and covers approximately 31 acres. The site in question is located about 250 feet north of the intersection of Pine Gate Drive and Pine Gate Circle in that cul-de-sac. And the lot number one in the Pines is about 0.8 acres in size. It's zoned SF-12 PRO. And the applicant is requesting to reduce the interior side yard setback to eight feet for that one lot in the Pine subdivision. The request is based on the intent to bring the actual building closer to the front than the side setbacks would allow. If, if the applicant built the house at the 15-foot required side yard setback, the house would be set back a lot farther from the street than, than any of the neighboring properties would as well. So in order to create a cohesive development across the entire subdivision, the applicant is requesting to reduce the side yard setbacks on both the east and west sides of this property. The basis of this decision is located in 403, or section 403 of the code. This being a PRO concept plan, they are allowed to modify the zoning, the underlying zoning, and they are allowed to modify the underlying zoning with a final plan in regards to setbacks if it does not impact the setback standard or decrease setbacks by less than 5%. And if you look at this from a few different perspectives, you'll find that this request only reduces the setbacks by 1% or 2% at max. If you're looking at it as one lot out of 51 lots, then that's about a 2% reduction. If you're looking at it from its two side yards, the left and right of the house, out of 94 side yards throughout the entire subdivision of the Pines, it's about a 2% reduction as well. Or if you look at it from the reduction of the number of linear feet of setback that they're reducing, so they're reducing the 15-foot required setback down to eight, which is a reduction of seven feet times two sides for this one lot, 14 feet total reduction out of the 1,400 feet approximately of all the other interior side yards on the other 51, or the other 50 lots in the Pines. That's about a 1% reduction. So any way that you look at it, it is a reduction of less than 5% of the side yard setbacks. And this staff believes would classify it as a minor deviation in the PRO, from the PRO concept plan. And it also meets the intent of pulling that building to the front in line with all the other houses in terms of the front setback. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the PRO final plan amendment with one condition. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Phillips?
I know that, I guess, I'm looking at it here, a little over a year ago, we approved a similar amendment for Lot Number Two, which is the...
Adjacent lot.
Directly adjacent to this lot. Has that house been built and did it use the entire extra space that we gave it? So are we putting these two houses now really close together?
I believe, I'm not sure if it has been built or is under construction currently, but...
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that house has been completed, and I believe that their setbacks were approximately eight feet. So eight feet here and eight feet there, there's still a 16-foot setback, which is stand, which is typical for an SF-7 zoning district. This is SF-12, which has a 15-foot setback, but that eight foot, that 16-foot building separation is pretty standard for most single-family subdivisions in Blue Springs.
So it's, so it's not going to look ridiculously close or anything like that when you drive into that cul-de-sac and think those two buildings are...
I, I don't believe so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come forward? You don't need to be sworn in.
Nate Zier, owner of Zier Construction LLC, located at 5817 Manor Drive in Parkville, Missouri, 64152. I just want to say that I agree with everything that we've, we've worked out. And again, just to reiterate, eight-foot setback is very standard from what I've seen around the city. And so it's, it's not going to look, you know, crazy close together once you drive into the subdivision. And you can notice too, you know, with the pie-shaped, I guess the reason I've, you know, applied for this is with the pie-shaped lot, it's just a narrow opening to the lot. And also, we're, we're dealing with a... and also, we're, we're dealing with a, quite a bit of a drop-off too, that dipped down into ravine. So, to bring that house closer to the street is going to be beneficial too, and just, it's going to be a better fit for my homeowner and, and the house itself, so.
Okay. It's nice to know that. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
How difficult would it be to move it back another five feet?
Oh, another five feet? Again, just with the drop-off that we're dealing with, my surveyor has it sit very perfectly where, where it needs to be in order to get the, the nine-foot basement we're looking to get. She's, and my homeowner's not going to get much of a backyard, which she's not too worried about, but she's going to have a little bit of a, oh, when the, when the, when you step out of the basement, there's, is going to be about a three or four-foot decline that, you know, we're going to build a deck with a stairway to access the back. It's going to be a walkout basement, so, I mean, it would be, I guess it wouldn't be impossible, but it'd be, you know, very ni, it'd be great if we could keep it as, as planned.
Well, I'm just thinking another five feet would give you more width, and you wouldn't have to have the, maybe it would be 10-foot or 12-foot on each side, wouldn't be such 50% of what the standard is supposed to be.
How far is it going, excuse me, how far is it going to be from the, the property line on one side and the other?
Eight, eight feet.
Eight feet.
Side setbacks, yeah.
Which is normal on a cul-de-sac lot.
Mm-hmm. What's that, what's normal?
Well, I mean, that's usually about what you have.
Like, yeah, pretty standard, you know, you go around to the different subdivisions around the city, and eight feet's the typical setback.
There must be quite a slope in the back, if, it's going to be another three feet from their back.
It, it does slope off quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, so that.
I mean, the front yard will be nice and flat, but then it's, it's a pretty gradual fall. It's just located, you know, south of Blue Springs, south, you have that ravine with that creek that goes through there, and it gets pretty steep.
Well, if you pushed it back, you'd have to support the back of the house.
But that's just it, yeah, that's what we're trying to avoid, yeah.
With tiers or something.
Yeah, piers, yeah.
Piers. I've seen a house like that.
Yeah, I've had, I've had to, yeah, add piers to a house, and it's, it adds some cost to it, so, something you would want to try to avoid.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant? I thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Haney?
I would approve amended plat residential overlay, 12176183, with one condition.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Graham? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Thank you. Now, we have other business. Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For next meeting, and we have a fifth Monday next week, so it'll be three weeks before we see each other again. Surprisingly, it will be the middle of February all of a sudden. So, February 12th, as noted earlier, Southwest Park, that city property, will be coming forward with their rezoning, public hearing, as well as preliminary plat and final plat for those, part of that property as well. Also have a few other items, including a conditional use permit for SolarPro window tinting on Southwest 7 Highway and the South Ridge Shopping Center. You've actually heard that item before, but the applicant has, has now actually moved within the center, and so because of that, they need to amend or receive a new conditional use permit, so, nothing, you know, substantially has changed from their proposed use there except for the location on the property. And we also have, looks like a preliminary plat for Calmar Senior Living, which is kind of the next step with that senior apartment complex on Coronado Drive, just east of the golf course. So, with that, this was forthcoming here on the next meeting. We also do want to discuss National Planning Conference coming up in April. Those deadlines for registration are coming up pretty quickly as well, and so I'll turn that over to you, Madam Chair, in terms of, I believe there are some that have shown some interest, and I believe yourself included.
Well, I, my only concern with me saying yes is my schedule, and that's the only reason. But I do know that there's a couple of you that would like to attend, and I don't know how you want me to split the tie, or draw the name, or. We can do that if you'd like, or if there's somebody that just really wants to go, or if the, you know.
We have literally drawn names from a literal hat.
If there's just two, you could flip a coin.
Okay. We could do that too.
That's true.
Okay?
And traditionally, we have deferred to those who have not attended in the past.
Oh, wow.
To give preferential treatment, so, not just the fact that you're the chairperson, but the fact that you've not attended before as well.
It's hard with my schedule.
Okay.
Because I already travel so much that it's hard to plan a schedule where you got to travel again, so, because I'm hitting the roads already. I teach, so that's why I, I don't want them to think I'm on over-road truck drivers. Not that there's anything wrong with that. So, but I mean, that's what I want to make sure that they understand. So, okay. So, you may flip a coin?
Sure.
I may have one.
Lynn, if you want to go, go.
Me?
Yeah.
Well, you're going to teach for me?
No.
Well, then that's a choice I have. I don't have a quarter, but I've got a nickel. Then what happens if they've scheduled me to be gone for a week, and I don't want to do that? Oh, thank you. All right, that's a neat one. Did it that? All right. We have, I think I've got the right names. Mr. Peel, Commissioner Peel, you said that you wanted to go?
Yes, Chair.
And, Mr. Cradoff?
Yes.
Okay, so, heads or tails?
Tails.
And then, of course, you have the other choice. So, we'll see which one it is. I'll let it drop on the ground.
Okay.
Okay, witnesses. Heads. Guess it's a good thing if you don't get to pick. So, Mr. Peel, well, you'll be going to the, to New Orleans. How do you like that?
Awesome.
That's how we're going to pick. We were sophisticated tonight with our choice, so, enjoy. Is there any other business?
Nothing that dramatic, no.
Hey, you never know what we're going to do up here.
I love the fact, again, thank you for acknowledging our new assistant director, Mike Mallon.
Thank you.
Just started today, so, he's diving in headfirst here with, we have three night meetings in a row here this week, so.
Oh, my.
We're either going to burn them out or get them supercharged for.
Welcome to Blue Springs.
Thank you.
We're drawing. Do you have anything you'd like to say before we close out?
Just like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm excited. A lot of good things going on in Blue Springs, and I'm, I'm excited to be a part of it, and look forward to working with, with each of you and working for the citizens of Blue Springs.
Well, you'll get to know all of us in a period of time, but I know you've got a lot to do, and thank you and welcome. You're in good hands with our staff that's already here. They do an excellent job, so, thank you very much.
Who else, who else's last name spelled?
It's M-A-L-L-O-N.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business? If none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Peel? And do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Fairbanks? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting's adjourned.